I'd like to call the order, the special meeting, budget meeting for February 22nd, 2024, 10 o'clock a.m. at the Rockingham County Board of Elections, 240 Cherokee Camp Road, Readsville, North Carolina. I'd like to welcome our board members this morning to see you, and I would like to welcome those of you who chose to visit with us on Zoom. At this time, I would like for the, uh, a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded. We approved the agenda. Is there any discussion? Here is none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. You have approved the agenda. At number three, fiscal year 2024 through 2025 budget discussion. Paula will lead the voice.
Okay. Do all of you have your budget information? Okay. Over to the right-hand side. You'll see I've got fiscal year 2020, 2021. That is the year that we're comparing it to. With the election cycles, you have to go by the type of election year it is. You can go by last year's numbers for certain things, but you have to actually compare apples to apples. So the last presidential election was in 2020, 2021 fiscal year. So that's why that's on there. So that's what we're comparing it to. When we did our fiscal year budget last year, we had to look at four years ago for the municipal election and the primary for presidential. We will only have one election in the fiscal year 2024, 2025, which will be this November. Next spring is an off-year because we'll have a municipal election. The odd years are municipal elections. The even years are the primary in general. And our municipal elections do not have primaries. There are some counties that do have primaries for their municipals, but Rockingham does not. But, yes.
Question. When will we have that election?
The no-
When will the new, when will we in 2025 have?
November.
In November? Not a primary?
Yes.
Okay.
So are there any questions on anything that I've discussed so far? Okay, there are. I am still waiting on one number in here, and that is under service maintenance. And when we get there, I will let you know. I was waiting on two numbers, and I got one number this morning. But going down the line, the reg- the regular salaries, those forecast numbers were given to me by county management, and I can share those with you. I got those late yesterday afternoon. All I had originally was the number, but I can give those to you. Board members. I put it on here, reduced board members from five to four per session law 2023-140, but that could be changed again. So I had originally taken out one of the board members, but I put it back in. It is easier to include than to add later.
Better to take away.
Yes. It is very hard to get money added to your budget. It's okay if there's more than enough. So I, you will see that I actually have five board members and then election pay for one election. So, but like I said previously, I had reduced it to four, but I did add that back. So we did so far. Okay. The temporary salaries. You know, that's for office assistance here when we have special projects, whenever we're doing recounts, voter registrations, setting up at festivals, doing registration drives at the libraries. That is where this is used. And like I said, it is used for in this office. It's also used if they're helping us in the workshop, get ready for elections and things like that. The next page is election precinct staff, and I should have numbered the pages, and I apologize for not doing that. But the 2024 general election is what this budget is mainly based on. We will have the four early voting sites, and we're anticipating needing 96 officials, 12 per shifts, and two shifts like what we're using now. The shifts are working six and a half hours apiece. And, um, and if they take lunches, of course, that comes off, but they're six and a half hour shifts. Then on the 15th precinct, we're looking at 200 officials. With this general election, we will need that. So it'll be 12 to 14 per precinct. We're expecting a huge turnout for the general election from all indications. We have had a great turnout, as far as I'm concerned, right now for early voting. There have been some hours that are slow. I do not have the numbers from 2020 early voting to look at, but compared to the 2022 election, we've almost doubled the numbers. It's some of the, it's not all of the precincts, but at Eden, here, and Western. So it's, people are showing up. So, um, and I didn't realize last night till Roy, we were talking earlier, I couldn't figure out four o'clock yesterday till the rest of the night was quiet. It's Wednesday night. I forgot. So, um, 'cause usually that's when it really starts picking up, but I don't know, I didn't know what day it was. We lose our days. But anyway, um, but still, the numbers were good. So we're very pleased with, you know, the voter turnout and seems to be going well. But anyway, back on the 2024, 25. Insurance numbers, the FICA numbers, regular retirement, unemployment, workman's comp. That all was given to me from county management. And then item 4123010, we do have Rockingham update, the live stream for our board meetings. And this is, we've got him as 12 regular meetings and three special called. And that's something for y'all to think about if you want to leave it at that, or add to it, or just let me know on the live streaming. And then on the next page, legal. Of course, that's Brian with Kenan, Brian Farrell with Kenan and Craver. We did get our number in for the, um, challenge. And it was over $5,200, so I will let you know that. When it comes to a challenge, that's where this money comes into play. But there's a lot of work that is done. And I'm sorry, lawyers are not cheap, but-
And think about it. He was not there for the first one.
Right.
But he was there for the second one. Can you imagine what we would have spent?
Wiped it out.
Yeah. Well, we didn't, but, I mean, every, it's every minute that is calculated.
Does that include lunch breaks and everything for him? I think it probably does, but we don't know.
Excuse me one second. Sorry.
He wasn't chief, was he?
No.
But that's-
What do you do?
But we, well, I'm not surprised.
One question follow the number in the far right.
You were right.
Is that the actual dollars or is that the budgeted dollars?
The zero, we did not have a board of elections attorney in 2020. We used the county attorney, so there was no dollars there.
Yeah, but this is, this is budgeted dollars.
This was actual spent dollars for the-
Actual.
2020, 2021. Those were the actual dollars spent. Coming down on the utilities. I did ask the assistant county manager if that would still be the same case what we had this past year, where we pay one-third of the cost. And he said, still at this point, yes. So what I did, Duke Energy, of course, y'all know, had an 18% hike or increase in their monthly rates. So I took what we are tracking right now, added the rest of the year, and added 18% to come up with the $6,200. And you'll see, four years ago, we paid 100%, and it was 8,249. Well, we didn't pay 100%. We helped Incorporated pay 40%. I'm sorry about that. So if you add 40% to that, you're looking at 14,000.
What about the gas heat?
That's all included. It's the water, the outside lighting, the electricity.
This is what came from the county, you said?
Yes, the ga, well, we figured, I figured this, the gas and the sewer. All of that's included in the utilities. But the, um, the county will be paying for two-thirds of that because they'll have the use of the other side of the building.
Two-thirds of the 6,200?
No, the 6,200 is our portion. So their portion would probably, it would be 12, 4. So it's one-third of the total cost. The next item, 4124030, service maintenance. I'm still waiting on the maintenance cost for the voting equipment for 2024, 2025. Hopefully, I will have that today or tomorrow. But we did hear back from Brady on their annual maintenance for the security system and badge system. And that is, instead of the 2940, it's going to be 3220, which is $3,220. But with the cleaning services and the security monitoring, those are correct. Cleaning services stayed the same. They said they would not be increasing. And I will let you know that Brian Farrell said he would not be increasing on his rates either.
Okay, now we're on 4030.
Mm-hmm.
Count 4030. Go through that one more time. What was increasing?
The annual maintenance for security system and badge is the very last one.
Okay.
That is for our cameras and security system on the building. It's going from 2940 to 3220.
Okay.
So 3,220. And that's for the year. And I'm still waiting on the voting equipment, which you have is 38,750. It may stay the same. It may increase. I have not got a firm number on that as of yet. But the cleaning service and the security system are correct. Yeah, that makes sense. Okay. All right, building repair, unexpected building repairs. And I am including, um, we may have to pay for the renovation that we've been waiting on for a year now. They've had several people coming out giving estimates. I think we've had like eight or 10 people. So I put in a number of 10,000 because the amount has been anywhere from 5,000 to 8,500. And, um, so that's an estimate. I don't know how that will be viewed or... But they know it is something I need.
So what, what are, what will the renovations entail?
It's tearing down those three walls, building two short walls in the hallway, and then doing the sheet rock, the rewiring and all of that. They've got to raise the ceiling in the middle room.
This will be between us and the exercise area.
That is correct.
And you've got that number of 10,000?
I put 10,000. It's an estimate because, like I said, they've had estimates from 5,200 to 8,500. So, you know, that's so we can cover everything. And hopefully, you know, of course, I would like a wall in here to separate this into two rooms, but that can wait.
And your highest bidder so far has been someone that has been used in the county that they would recommend that would do an effective job.
Yes. The main thing they're looking at is the exiting, what the fire marshal is going to require because that will be, it's a very large room. And once you have so many people, the capacity in that room, they have to have, I don't know, escape, you know, how their easy access or exit. And the door back there, there is a latch on it. And what they're saying, you may have to have a panic door opener. So that could cost the additional money. So that's something that's being questioned.
All right, can I ask this question? It probably doesn't have anything to do with those who have come to bid. How did you advertise? Did you advertise or you just chose?
Maintenance does that. I don't have anything to do with it. They're the ones that contact them. Because they were the ones that was going to do the work originally. But it's been a steady flow. All right, on the next page, equipment repair. That is like our machines or anything in the office that may need repairs. We usually put in $1,000 for that. And the next thing is the postage for absentees, office mailings, the notice of change of address cards, the voter confirmation cards, voter registration cards. Is one general election and for general office mail, we're estimating 15,000. You'll see in 2020 and 2021, we spent $10,784, and the mail then was 47 cents, and it's now 66 cents. And-
And slower.
And increasing. So it's a possibility it could go higher than the 15, but we're going to leave it at the 15,000. Moving down to printing, absentees, ballots, coding, the layout for the general election, and then updating our brochures, educational materials, manuals, public request, voter cards. We're estimating 46,500. And then the general insurance, that is an amount that's provided by the county.
So we don't pay any portion of that?
That's what our portion is.
Is the 7,550?
Yes, ma'am. That is our portion. Okay, and then on the next page, we'll move into communications. It's 4125030. That is for our office phones, long distance, whatever. The cellphone coverage, that is the cellphone we use during elections. And then the Wi-Fi is used at Zion Baptist Church for our early voting site. We usually have that for two to three months, depending on when we can actually get access to that Wi-Fi. That is like a Wi-Fi, but it's a personal device that we get cell service so they can electronically send their figures throughout the whole day of early voting.
And why do we have that and just maustrate?
Because we have the other three sites or county-owned buildings, and they have Wi-Fi.
Okay.
And we do not, we have to be on a dedicated server. So we have a personal Wi-Fi that is passcode protected and is hooked to just those laptops at the Readsville early voting site.
We don't do that, uh, calling the numbers for the general election?
They still do that. They still call in, but I'm able to track the numbers on the system to make sure that everything is being transferred correctly. And so far, so good. So it's a way of making sure everything is going in and being recorded correctly.
Let's go back to Converge for a minute.
Okay.
Thought process. How do they provide, do we not have access to, um, an internet that includes phone service?
Well, these are our voice-over IP lines, but that is our monthly office phones that we use here. That is our servant, which is about $100 a month is what it's costing us to use those.
That's the landlines.
It is. It is our landlines.
Okay.
Which is the 8107080910 is for our office phones here.
And it is tied into, if I remember correctly, the county's phone system?
It is.
It's an extension off of our-
Yeah.
Extension from that service.
Each department pays a certain percentage of the telephone bill.
Well, you know, I was thinking about just, you know, my own. I've got my landline service through internet, which is spectrum. And it costs me $14 a month.
But this is commercial. Commercial is more expensive than residential.
Maybe we ought to go to residential. Move a bed over here, so.
Yeah. Commercial is more expensive.
Put it in the kitchen first.
And we have multiple lines coming in as well.
Yeah.
But good question. All right, anything else before we move on? Okay. Advertising. We have the ads for the 2024 general election, miscellaneous notices such as changes, precinct moves, et cetera, required notices. That goes into the Rockingham Now newspaper, and it has to be listed three to four times prior to the election. And it goes in the Sunday paper. And we still have the monthly audio and video programs. If y'all want to continue that, I know, hopefully, after this election, we can do a few more. But with two elections back to back, it was hard to do any videos, but we do still have money in our budget for this year to do that. But that's something else for the board to think about if you want to continue to do that. Deues is our staff dues for the North Carolina Association of Directors of Elections. The three staff members in the office are members of that, and we get updates from that association on a regular basis. And that is the yearly figure of $60. Travel is, we use the county vehicle during the elections to visit the different sites, and that is what that money is allotted for. That way, we pay for just the gas. We're not paid by the mall. Moving down-
So you reserve a vehicle?
Mm-hmm.
And you only have to pay for what?
I pay for the gas that I use.
The county doesn't charge for the vehicle?
No.
Okay.
I just pay for the gas.
Okay.
And of course, if something happens to it, we'd have to, our department would pay for it, but so far. And that's the car that's parked under the shed. So a lot of people have asked, what is that car? That's the county car. That way, it's, we need anything, it's right at the warehouse. We put it in that car, and we take it to the sites.
That car is not here all the time, though, is it?
No, just during the elections. I usually get it set, the day of setup for early voting, and I have it till the day after Election Day. So it's, it's about three weeks that we, three to four weeks that we have it for our disposal. We actually use a different vehicle we have access to if we go to conferences. But the county's been very good at supplying vehicles. The August conference will be in Greensboro in August. So I did not put in motel fees. It's just our registrations, well, the registrations for the board members and the meals. And you'll see, I did include all five. Originally, when I was doing this, I had four board members, but I put the fifth one back in.
What's the date of that conference, do you know?
August 4th through the 6th, Sunday through Tuesday. And it's at the Corey Convention Center. It just happened to be the same dates as it was in March.
Fourth through the 6th?
Yes, sir. It's Sunday through, I'm sorry, it's Sunday through Tuesday. I think I said Monday. Sunday through Tuesday. And everything will be at the Corey Convention Center in Greensboro. And the mileage rate, I went off the expected mileage rate at that time, which is the 67 cents per mile, is what you'd be reimbursed at.
Is that based on everybody using their personal vehicle?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that is, all of you, each of you, 250 miles, five board members for one conference, it's 67 cents a mile. And it may be a little bit more than that. But are there any questions on that? Okay. Staff training, same thing. Well, the hotel should be taken off. I had taken that out. But we do have the NCAD conference, which is usually a little bit more. So we do have to have a hotel for that. Usually, that is in New Bern. And that's usually held in March. And they usually have that conference during the odd years when there's not an election in the early year.
So you said you took that, the hotel off. You mean, we just drive through it, but you did not, the figures are-
It includes the hotel for the NCADE conference, but it does not include the hotel for the conference in Greensboro. So it is still higher than the board, but we also included the IT technician. We usually do that for when they have technical things that are coming up. They haven't had a lot of that at the last couple of our conferences, but they are planning to do more so at the upcoming conferences. So we usually try to include one IT technician to be able to attend if they do have- if they do have IT items during the conference. And with it being in Greensboro, that works better because it's local. But are there any questions on that? General supplies, that's supplies that we need for the daily operations of the office. Any projects or events that we have coming up. It is our fax services, which is the Concord Technologies. And the Toshiba copier charges, we are charged per copy that we make. It's a rate per black copy, black and white copies, and a rate for color copies. It can get very expensive. And we're pretty much estimating or trying to estimate how many copies we would actually need.
That does not include anything, but does that include ink and the service?
No, the ink, the service, we have a service maintenance, the county has that. But the toner, we paid for that, or the ink.
What are they charging us for then?
The copies.
The paper, instead of for the machine, they charge you by copy?
Yeah, and the maintenance.
But usually they, part of that deal is they furnish the ink. That's the reason for the difference in the cost of black and white versus color.
I think that also depends on the age of the copier. But we usually buy the toner and, but that also includes their rate of maintenance for the month too, so. But now they do supply us with the toner box, you know, where the dirty ink is stored.
Mm-hmm, overflow.
Well, it's, after it's used so many times, it goes into a box and we have to replace that box periodically.
Who do we have?
Waste toner box.
Who do we have this copier charge with? Who, who is it?
I do not know. It, the whole county is a contract.
It's on a county contract.
It is, it's a county contract. The guy is very fast and responsive when we have issues.
I would too, if I get in that kind of reimbursement. I'd be here, because he's not making any money when it's down.
Yeah.
Right?
That's true. And the only time we had any issue was when Nashville had their ICE. Because their headquarters is in Nashville. And we had a part that went down on the copyright before early voting started. And usually he's out the next day and we had to wait four days because the planes could not leave Nashville. And he was very apologetic, but hey, you can't fly a plane when it's ice on the runway. So, but they're very responsive when we have issues. They know the importance of trying to get our copies out. And then the precinct supplies, is the supplies used during the early voting and election days? That's everything that's included in their cages such as printer ink, copier paper, these little notepads, ink pens, anything that they need at the election sites. Even if we're replacing magnifying glasses. Anything like that that we use at the precincts, that's where this line item comes into play. But as you can see, our budget for the fiscal year 2024, 2025, and I need to add a little bit of money here.
There's quite a bit of difference in the, in what was in the 2021 election. Both of those, talking about general supplies and precinct supplies. Can you give us some insight on that? Get through doing what you're doing.
Wow, it is a significant difference.
Let me get to that page.
Was it because it was a major election year?
It was COVID, they had their PPE supplies that were required. Remember the 2020, 2020, well, the 2020 election was right at the peak of COVID. And they were having to buy a lot of the PPE supplies, wipes, alcohol, well, gloves, masks, shields. There was Plexiglas plates put up. There was a lot of prep work that had to be done during the 2020 election.
Obviously, the budget for that day did not suffice because they didn't anticipate that. So that, we had to have a big overrun.
Yes.
To get that.
Well, yes. And the good thing was, we did get some HAVA funds that covered that, but it was still an expense that the department had to account for.
So it was an expense and we got, we got government money to subsidize the budget?
Yes. But yes, that was, and if you also remember, pens were not used like they are now. Everybody that came in to vote got pens.
And they kept them.
And we also paid for masks for voters and precinct officials, and that was very costly.
Hand sanitizers and all that.
Hand sanitizers, we had.
We used a lot of hand sanitizer.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that was the major.
And that's just our expense, the seventeen thousand, seventeen thousand? Not for the entire county, it's just ours.
That was just what was used in this department.
Wow.
Yeah, well, what about the forty three thousand? That was a huge amount. And they also had Q-tips that were being used for certain, well, automark machine and, yeah.
Whatever you needed was more expensive then.
Yes.
That's what it was.
Well, it was safety, anything that we needed to protect the voters, it was purchased.
Was that the reason for the significant difference in the general supplies?
Yes. Because we had to have that in the office as well. Okay, so I added in the difference, what I know the difference was for the maintenance service agreements. So now the total is six hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and fifty-two. And that, of course, is without the service agreement number for our voting machines. And the actual amount that was spent in 2020, 2021 was five hundred and two thousand, eighty-eight dollars. And I know they're going to say a hundred thousand dollars. But also during that time, there was one staff member.
One what?
One full-time staff member. And one was here for four months. So now I don't know, I, I don't know where the regular salary amount came from. You know, one twenty-seven, eight ninety-nine, I know it was, and that may have been, they may have been putting the money in there for the temporary workers to wash out.
You have a significant increase in health insurance costs too.
Yes, yes.
Well, no, we didn't have a we didn't have a full-time, full-time director.
We didn't have a full-time director.
That's right, that's the adjustment for that.
VICA has gone up, health insurance has gone up, retirement has gone up a lot.
And all of those things, you need to, you need to list those things, especially not having a director at that time. That's a big difference.
Yes, that could be.
So that.
Well, a bigger chunk of that money comes from the dollar amounts given us per salary forecast.
Yes.
My rough calculations are that over eighty thousand dollars is attributed to, to salary forecast.
Yeah.
Which leaves roughly twenty.
The director, yeah.
Yeah, that is a
Because I don't know when the director retired that time, so.
Paula, I'm having a little problem here. The current budget, we call it the twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Yes, sir.
Starts when and ends when?
It starts July first and ends June.
Twenty twenty-three.
Yes, all right. The budget we're in right now started July the first, twenty twenty-three, and it ends June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, and the budget that we're talking about is going to start when and end when?
It will start July first, twenty twenty-four, and end June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, and when is the election? When is the municipal election to take place?
You mean the general?
Well, the general.
This is for the general election, and that's November fifth
Right.
of twenty twenty-four.
Okay, now we're going to the next one, which would be?
This budget does not include the municipal election for next year.
That's my point, that's my question.
That will be the next year's budget that y'all will be doing next year.
So there's actually only one election in this one, and that's the biggie?
That's the biggie, yes.
Got it.
Okay, all right, so going through. Of course, you know the legal, we did not have a county attorney, well, a Board of Elections attorney, we were using the county attorney, so that's a fifteen thousand dollar increase. The service maintenance agreements have gone up since then. The building repair, that's for the renovations in this building. Postage is, has gone up, but the cost has as well per stamp. Printing has gone up, and you know, the printing has been going up for a while. I haven't heard anything lately about the shortage of paper, so I'm assuming that that has gotten back on track. But the cost is still remain the same, once they increase, they never decrease. So.
Definitely.
But general insurance, you can see that that has really gone up. The insurance rates have gone up considerably. Communications, that has gone up. Prior to that year, the director had a cellphone, but they did not have a cellphone in the department while there was no director here, so that's one of the differences. And they had not used a MiFi for a one-stop, I think it was at the Salvation Army then. But advertising has actually gone down by the estimates. Deues were the same, travel, like I said, that's using the county vehicle. Board training during COVID, I know a lot of the trainings were either canceled or they did online via Zoom. Like when I first came here, I know that the 2021 was done online. The 2020 conferences may have been canceled because they usually book the venues from what they told us this past conference, three years in advance. And then staff training would have been the same thing. I think the sixty dollars there, that looks like that may have been a renewal on Novry. That's what it's, the figures look like. General supplies, we've already talked about. The decrease on that and the precinct supplies, but that was during the COVID when it first started, and everything had to be bought for that. And, and so you know, we have, we did supply all of our early voting sites with masks for the precinct officials that did wrong during this election. We did supply those to them, not for the voters, but for the precinct officials during this election. But are there any questions, comments, changes you would like to see, increases, decreases?
It looks like most of the changes have been related to salary.
Yes.
Salary and benefits.
And here, I've got these for you. The bill pass. There's three, you fill past that thing. And these are not actuals, these are forecasts, so. The county commissioners during their
Oh, I need one more.
One more, it should be.
I'm sorry.
It's right there.
I need one.
Yeah. During their budget work session, they did propose a four percent COLA for all county employees and a three percent, I mean, well, excuse me, up to three percent merit raise. So that is put in here. And actual seats are to put a budget calendar. So you'll know when things are happening in the county, as well as they've changed the format for how we are to submit our budgets this year. We have to put a department mission statement and services notation, our budget highlights, a sign, what our significant accomplishments have been, and looking ahead and future issues that we're actually looking at. And you have that attached to the back of the budget calendar.
I got short change. I don't have it.
It's on another.
Oh.
It's right there underneath your agenda.
Paula, fifty, twenty.
Fifty, twenty, okay.
General insurance, that's not health insurance, that's on the buildings and stuff.
Yes, yes.
That went up.
It went up a lot, yes.
In comparison to what it was, we'll double, we'll mow them.
Yeah, homeowner's insurance and commercial insurance, they all went. They were approved, they raised this year too.
We're spending less on advertising. When you figured the salaries, did you? When you figured the salaries, did you figure in the four percent?
I don't figure salaries.
Oh, they just give it to you?
They give it, what you see is what they give me.
Okay, they, they did, they did include that, though, I assume?
Yes. Do you want a calculator?
I've got one.
No, don't.
I'm good.
I have a drawer full.
He's longer uses phone than I.
Okay. Does anybody want a calculator? Cause I've got a drawer full, okay.
We've spent eight thousand dollars almost on training.
Yes. And it is only one conference this time.
Really?
What you go by, so y'all know any four conferences. If there is one election in the fiscal year, you have one conference. If there are two elections in a fiscal year, you have two conferences. So every other year is two conferences.
Okay, I come up with four hundred eighteen thousand, seven hundred four dollars attributed to items which were given to you by the county.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, four hundred eighteen thousand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which leaves.
Two hundred thousand.
Hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred forty-eight dollars.
I said, I've never looked, thought about it that way.
Yeah. So we're not talking, this budget is not a substantial increase over our older budgets, except for the items given to you by the county or required by the county. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, well, required.
Well, it's fixed.
We, we should have had a director before this year. And so what you're saying is, that was an expectation of the county that we weren't able, or the previous board weren't able to do. So they operated without, without that, cause that's figured out.
No, what I'm.
No, what I'm saying is, look at your budget items, Tom, per salary forecast, hundred seventy-two thousand versus a hundred twenty-seven thousand, that's forty-four thousand, one hundred eight dollars more, which is simply required by the, the salary forecast from the county.
Mm-hmm.
And if you go through each of those items, you come up with, what did I say, four hundred eighteen thousand dollars?
All the other items?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which leaves a difference of a hundred ninety-one thousand dollars that is, I think, directly attributable to our request.
Mm-hmm.
And that's just to operate.
Yes.
That's minimal, it really is. To operate that, based on what we have to do.
Yeah.
That's a minimal kind of number we're dealing with. And I hope they see it that way.
Well, when they see a hundred thousand, cause what they will look at is the numbers from four years ago. But you've also got to look at the increases that we have no control over. Um, postage has gone up.
Renting.
Printing has gone up.
Engine.
Utilities, insurance, everything has gone up. And we can't look at last year's election at a midterm election compared to a presidential election. It, they're just not comparable.
So now, at one point, did we not have to verify the increase? Why we felt like we needed this over that? We had to write it into, is that going to be done?
Yes, it will be, each thing will be itemized. Now, the items that the county gives me, it will say per salary forecast or per, or county forecast.
Yeah.
Because that's provided by them.
That's the three percent per salary.
Yep, the COLA and, and it's still not guaranteed, but that's what they are proposing.
Well, you know, they, they're having an issue with people coming in, working in many of the departments, and they just flipping out, dude. You don't know where they're going, what they're doing, but, uh.
You mean they leave?
Uh-huh, yeah. Might not be the thirty days, sixty days, amazing.
There's a lot of jobs out there.
Mm-hmm, a lot of opportunities out there in county government right now.
You have to ju- uh, well, he just pointed, is that you have to write a budget justification?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I do.
And in that justification?
There you go.
I didn't know the word, the word to say justification, but I knew you have to put something in there to make sure that they know it, and you want to make sure that they see.
Yes, and I will let you know, we will, you'll see, um, that they're looking at department budget meetings with the county manager and the budget finance staff. They're saying that will take place April fifteenth through the nineteenth. So if any of you would like to attend that, just let me know. Cause usually, well, since I've been here, I've been called to go to that, and I've.
I went.
Yes, one year, I think.
I went one year.
Yes. Um, the chair, um, member, Totten, and then when you're, you went, right? Two years ago?
Maybe two years ago.
Two years ago, so.
What do you see as the most likely area where they will challenge our request?
I do not know. Um, last year, the challenge was mainly with the, um, training. Cause you know, they cut that in half. I'm not sure. I know they're, they probably have things that they want county management to look at, but I would have no clue what they are. With our department, I mean, pretty much, I am basing it on the needs, not the wants. So when it comes to what our office needs to operate during an election and the things that may come up, I would like a couple more express vote machines, but you see, it's not in here. Because we were not able to buy the twenty-five, cause they had an increase, we bought twenty-three. So, but with a hundred thousand dollar increase, I don't want to put it in the budget because it is a capital expenditure. I mean, there are things I know we need, but I can wait.
In some cases, you get not because you don't ask for it.
I know.
So I'm just saying.
We had that Bible in the verse, like, oh, that verse in the Bible.
Well, I can, I will say.
Remember that.
I mean, right now, we're good. Um, I would like two more machines, but.
You put on our wish list.
Uh, it's on my wishlist, and it will be in one of the things I would like to obtain.
What chance it's are, they're gonna ask you a question.
Yes.
Is anything else which you need?
And that's.
And that's when you open the door wide, cause I'm coming in for two machines.
Yeah, that is, um.
How much are those two machines?
I think they're, I'm afraid to say. I can look it up. I'm thinking each, we're probably looking at twenty to thirty thousand dollars.
For both?
Cause they're either ten to fifteen, they're somewhere between ten and fifteen thousand dollars apiece. And, but I will tell you, they are very helpful.
They are.
They are very helpful, um.
They who?
The machines, the express votes. Um, you run out of a particular ballot style, you still have that ballot style. It's in that express vote machine.
And I've seen it during early voting, being used at each of the four sites.
Yes, and people who, and I'm becoming one of them, who can't see small print. You can pull it up on those machines and the print is this big.
Wow.
And if you don't read very well, you know, or, you know, you can't see it to read it. The voice in the machine, when it reads through it, line by line, and you can slow it down or speed it up. You can change the contrast on those screens. If you have a problem looking at a white screen, it turns to a black screen with white letters.
Okay, we have fifteen precincts, so there's one of these at each of those precincts, but no backup.
We have twenty-three, so we have eight backup.
Okay.
Um, but I have, during early voting, I have two machines at every early voting site right now. But I will get back those machines for elections, so they'll be added into the three that I have actually in the workshop now. So I will have eight backup machines for fifteen sites, in case there is a need for them.
And on equipment maintenance over here?
Mm-hmm.
You, um, you only had a thousand dollars?
Yes, usually that equipment maintenance is for batteries and things like that in those machines, and we just did those during last fiscal year. And those batteries are good for five years.
What about the problem that you had at startup with the new printers?
That is, that could be used for the, but that was, we figured that out.
Operator.
Now, it was the wifi, those printers can print wifi, and they were searching for the wifi. But once it's gotten go, well, as the days go on, we have not seen that issue.
We haven't had that hit up since the first day.
Right, we had a couple the second day, but since then, it's been good. And during Election Day, we do not have wifi on those computers at all, so.
I would agree with Nelson, I think we probably ought to include, include those things for equipment needs.
Okay.
Even if maybe it's a little bit of a want, but we need backup. In that position, they need to cut something. They feel like they need to cut something to have done their job.
Well, I want to, I mean.
You're helping them out, aren't you?
Yes.
You wish I hadn't said that?
No, it's, it's true, I mean, yes, you're. I don't fudge the budget, that is one thing I don't believe in. I try to get as close as I can without undercutting our department.
Yeah, but we're coming upon what is an unprecedented election.
And you do not know what to predict.
That's it, exactly.
And I have, the, when I figure in the printing, I have figured every voter voting twice for ballots.
Yeah, but, well.
And we're supposed to order ballots for every voter plus ten percent.
Mm-hmm.
But we also have our express vote machines to cover that, cause you can spoil three ballots, so they have the opportunity of voting on four ballots.
Other than those two machines, uh, are there other equipment or maintenance items that you'd like to see that you've not included in this projection?
At this point, I think we're good. Um, I will say, in a couple of years, we'll probably have some of our DS two hundreds at their maximum capacity as far as what they have had go through them. There's a certain number that it gets to, that their life expectancy is over. But we still have a couple more years to go on those. I did switch out a lot of the DS two hundred machines this year with the lower count numbers, um, especially the most visited precincts. They got some of the smaller counts. We had spares out there that we put into, will be in the circulation this time. And, um, a lot of the absentee ballots and provisional ballot machines, we're using those as precinct machines. Where, and you're supposed to rotate them periodically. And that's what, what's done during our LMA testing.
Question for you. On March the eighth, you got a deadline for submission of budget requests, including revenue projections and backup documentation. You will have probably a significant increase in this, uh, early, in the primary versus the one back in twenty twenty-one, and, uh, that's your intro for those machines.
Yes, we'll say.
That, that would be, I, I, I would put it in the cover letter so that it's just not a comment I make if I were you, and you put it in there.
You create your.
You got it on paper.
Okay.
And that's the important thing, I would suggest you do that. But, uh, you'll have that information, which I think is at least significant.
Okay.
They're aware that that is an, is an expected need, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright. Anything else?
I'm not offended by these numbers. I mean, again, if we're talking basically a hundred ninety thousand dollars to operate this department, I mean, it, that seems to me to be reasonable. So I would suggest that we move forward with your budget, no, no, move forward with your budget, um, description or.
As documented here.
Yeah. And add in the two machines, I think.
Okay.
And you suggest. There's a more item.
Yeah.
Alright, I can do that.
So.
And then, I mean, you work very hard to keep expenses at a acceptable level, level, so.
And we try to use until we can't use anymore.
You're shaking at the toner?
Yeah, I'll get to that. But yeah, yes, we shake toner, and yeah, we make sure there's nothing in there. But.
Well, we haven't had a major issue with any of our elections, which I think speaks highly of, of this organization. And given what we anticipate is going to happen in November, just the numbers, um, I think the commissioners would be willing to consider, uh, our request.
Okay.
What do you think?
I think so, I really do.
I don't ask for a lot.
I think, I, I think, very key point is one that's terminated, a lot of these numbers, over, over seventy percent, no, over fifty percent of the numbers are given to us by the county.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, which we put in, and some of the others, we've got, you know, ink, uh, not ink, paper, advertisement.
Postage.
Postage, and those things, that they know the cost is going up on them.
Yes.
And we can't control that. You just did a lot of new postage you had to send out with, with the changes in, um, the party affiliations.
Yes.
Recently.
Yes.
That was something you didn't anticipate.
Yes.
To, I don't know how costly that was, but.
That. For postcard, I think it is now, it's either forty-four, forty-six cents a piece, where it used to be twenty-two cents. So, everything in postage has gone up, and I think there's gonna be another increase as well. But, but we have to, and that's the thing a lot of people don't understand. With this office, we can't we're required to mail certain things. Absentee ballots have to be mailed, and they're not one ounce. They're sent in an oversized envelope, so you're paying it's almost a, right, almost a dollar and a half just for the envelope. And then you've got the ounces in it. We're looking at probably almost three dollars for every absentee ballot that has been mailed out. And we have now mailed out two hundred and fifteen.
Compared to what you had in twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, see, we had a lot mailed yesterday.
Budget justification?
Yeah, does the voter pay for it to come back or do they give it?
The voter does pay for it to come back. We do not provide the postage for it to come back.
Okay.
Um, we've got all those postcards. All new registrations, everybody gets a voter card. They get a confirmation card. Well, a verification card, if that doesn't come back, or if it comes back undeliverable, we send out another card. Um, a lot of people have changed their party affiliations. People have gotten married, they have moved. Each time that happens, we print a card. Twice a year, we have the notice. We'll send out the notification of change of address. The information that comes from the post office. We have one lady call, and she said, I didn't send in anything about a change of my address. While we were talking, she said, well, I did ask them to quit change, sending the mail to my house to start sending it to my post office box. That's a change of address. But the post, the post office notified us. And we send out probably eight hundred to a thousand of those cards twice a year.
Wow.
With the notice of change of address.
Could we get a bulk mailing?
We, well, we get a discount with the card instead of a letter, but, yeah. We get so much for, because it is election mail that is going out.
I see some of these product, uh, promotion, uh, advertisement cards that's coming in. They've gotta be getting a rule break on the postage.
We do go through express mail. Um, they do come and pick up our mail, so.
Are we, are we seeing an increase in the number of registered voters? I, I haven't been able to track that recently, but uh, it looked like to me we'd had a fairly substantial increase the last time you sent out a, an overall report.
The last report is online, um, for I waited till the first week of February to post it, because the deadline was the ninth. But we have had during early voting, we've had at least one to six new registrations. Now, we do have a lot of registration forms that we have to hold until after the election. But most of those are changes, so.
What I was thinking, what I was thinking of is, if we could say that we've had this many increase in voter registration and we're anticipating a big voter turnout in the fall election, it's gonna require us to react to whatever comes up. We can't just say, well, we didn't plan for it.
Now, I can tell you the voter registration from twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one has increased
Mm-hmm.
from there, from then till now. Um, you're probably looking at eight to ten thousand voters increase.
Well, and I, I think that's a valid point to, to share. Also, how much has it increased this year? You know, we're into the, well, since November of last year.
That's a good point. I can let them know that.
If we're having handle more records, it requires more work. And the adjustments, the, the change of registration is, is, is just as much of a work assignment.
And people don't realize how much, how many things you send out and that you're required to send out.
Yes, and, you know, we can, if someone comes in and says, can I get a copy of my registration card? I lost it. We can print that and give that to them. But we are required to mail out their first voter card because we're tracking that to make sure they do live at the address that they say they live at.
But the only failsafe is if it doesn't come back, we assume they got it.
Yes. And we get a lot back. And that's postage that we paid.
Do these numbers reflect the cost of moving voter, the equipment to the precincts from here to the precincts and back here?
Maintenance, that is included in their salaries, and I'm not charged for that. The only thing I'm charged is their overtime, like, um.
Maintenance is with the county, county maintenance people? Okay.
The, um, county maintenance staff goes to all of the precincts and sit, well, they deliver all of our materials. Um, Election Day, they do come in at five thirty in the morning, so I'm responsible for their salaries from five thirty till eight o'clock. And that night, from five o'clock till however long, I'm responsible for that.
But you reflected that in?
Yes, that is reflected in here. And same thing with IT. Anything that is out of their normal working hours, we have to pay that portion of their salaries. And that is figured in these numbers as well.
Okay.
And their travel, 'cause I've, I've seen at least two IT people at the sites. They, they're coming in when I'm coming out, and that's around five, five o'clock, five thirty.
Yeah, well, if IT's going out, they're using.
A county car?
A county car. Are you talking about maintenance?
No, this was IT.
IT?
One.
Yeah, if they were called to go after hours, yes, we would compensate for that time. But I have a I have allowed so many hours and added to that for different things that could possibly come up when they would be needed.
Now, unless he was just over there for something, I, I, I mean, I'm just saying.
Voting.
Well, but.
'Cause there is one that is in, that lives in Eden.
No, it's wasn't Eden, it was Western.
Okay, okay, I don't know.
They bring the equipment in and set it up at night, the night before election.
We actually do it the day before.
How many the day before?
Um, the maintenance comes the day before. Now, they will come Sunday. The fourth or third. And load that afternoon, because early the next morning, they're at their first site. About eight, eight fifteen, because they have fifteen sites to deliver to in one day.
But they set up the day before, though?
They set up the day before, and the precinct officials meet them there. And they actually set up, so we're, we're paying them to be there as well, but that's included in this as well. A lot goes on behind the scenes.
Yeah.
That people don't realize.
Yeah. And during that setup, just like with the early voting, IT went with the maintenance crews to set up the laptops and the printers. So they followed them to all the sites, and they'll do the same thing for um, Election Day. They'll be there the day before. But as long as it's during working hours, that's part of their normal salary.
But if, we're open the polls, excuse me, we're open the polls at six thirty?
Six thirty.
If we have something and we need a technical support on IT, they have to come. They do come, and we're responsible until what time? Eight o'clock?
Yes, IT is in this, just like maintenance. At five thirty quarter till six, election morning, just like the rest of us. And usually after eight o'clock, they go to their office and do their normal stuff, but if we need them, they're available. The same thing with maintenance. They are here. Usually one person will come here. The rest of them are at their work area, but they're on standby to go anywhere we need them to go until eight o'clock. And then eight o'clock, they'll do their normal business, but if I need them when they're out and about, they will go to the job sites or the precincts as needed, as IT and maintenance. Both of those groups are really good and very attentive, especially during the election.
Let me back up to, uh, uh, Brian's, uh, fee. We do pay for his travel.
We do.
Right. That's part of the reason why it was.
Yeah, he still.
Five thousand, we pay for his travel.
Where does he have to come from?
Durham.
Durham. And he was here most of that day.
Yes.
Uh, so, we're talking probably ten, ten hours of, uh, or more than that, actually.
I was expecting the bill to be six thousand sixty-two hundred. That's what I was estimating.
And with what? How much?
It's about fifty-two, fifty-three. I've got it, if you would like to see. I've got a copy of it.
Um, many of the counties, excuse me, I'm gonna, go ahead, go ahead. Mine's unrelated, I think. Go ahead.
No, I'm just gonna say that, uh, uh, the, the fee doesn't strike me as being out of line.
No, what he did, the work he did, but, I mean, even he did work for the first hearing as well. He just could not be present. So, I, I have.
And he submitted his findings, I think, the next day.
Yes.
So, it was not only a matter of being here for the hearing, driving to Durham and working that night, so he put in some time.
He did.
Yeah.
And.
And I think he did a great job.
I do too.
Oh, yeah. What did they, what did they charge us for the first attorney, the city, the county attorney that?
They did not charge us anything, 'cause I actually asked the, well, Lance, if well, I said, if you needed to transfer his, part of his salary or whatever into our account, and he said no, so.
We did not voluntarily decide to hire, uh, Farrell. They, they said we couldn't use the county attorney.
Right.
They, they just said, don't do that.
Right.
Was that a good decision?
Uh.
At the time, yes.
Well, no question about the time. We had, but I'm, I'm thinking back, you know, we've got the county attorney. Uh, several of the counties do use the county attorney, their county attorney, and I'm wondering.
That would, that would be a county commissioner decision, wouldn't it? For us to start using him again, would it?
Yeah.
But it's also hours to look at the budget.
Yes.
Yeah, that's true.
And Brian does a great job. He does.
And there may be some, there may be some reasons that we need a separate attorney. But that's not true with the other departments in the county. They all depend on him. And if they need outside help, they bring in an outside attorney to help.
Yes.
So, once again, we didn't ask for that.
I know.
It just happened. It was kind of forced on us, actually.
But I'm wondering if that situation may have changed, where we should look at, a- and it may be a reason we shouldn't even ask for it. We just said, let, let's, let's have our own attorney. But it looks like to me that, um, the county attorney could function very effectively for us and not have a conflict.
As I recall, the reason for this was because the county wanted to be separate from us. And that's why we're set up as an independent agency, although we are under the county's umbrella.
Right.
And so that's why we ended up hiring our own lawyer to represent us.
So your thought is we probably ought to stay with that?
I, yeah.
I, I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think if it was an issue as far as cost, the county manager or the, those folks would point out to us, you know, why are we, why are you hiring, uh, outside counsel, so.
Well, the good thing, I like, he doesn't charge unless we use him. We're not, there are some attorneys.
That give us fee.
That there's a fee monthly, whether they're, yes, whether they're used or not, and this firm does not charge us for that. We only pay for the time we actually use him. So, that is a good thing, so. But is there any of these numbers that y'all think we need to change, things we need to look at a little bit more? And, and like I said, as soon as I get the voting equipment service maintenance number, I will let y'all know that. Um, I do expect it to go up a little bit, but not a lot. 'Cause it's at thirty-eight, seven fifty, but if it goes up, it may be a couple thousand.
Well, the only one that I saw that kind of stood out to me was this equipment repair. And they have an advertisement that I've been listening to that's true. Everything's gonna break. It's just question when. And so, I'm just wondering if a thousand dollars is, is a is sufficient enough with the amount of equipment we have?
Mm.
Uh, if we have to replace them on an emergency basis, or we have to get them repaired or whatever. So, but if you've got adequate backup, then you're okay.
Well, with our voting machines, we have a maintenance agreement that they have to make, yeah, they service them. That's what we're paying them for.
Mm-hmm.
So that would be in that agreement. Same thing with our security system here and the camera system. We're paying them to maintain.
They're already in the budget?
Yes.
Where do they show up in the budget?
Those, um, under service maintenance agreements, which is the fourth page back. Voting equipment.
Okay.
And then the annual maintenance for security system and badge system.
That's, that's really the best way to do it, uh, as far as having someone responsible and already paying them to do it.
Yes, and know what they're doing.
Mm-hmm, I know what they're doing.
Yes. So. Anything you want me to address?
I think you said you wanted us to think about fifty, forty on the same page where communications is advertising.
Yes.
You want us to think about that?
Yes.
And you also wanted us to decide thirty-ten. I think thirty-ten needs to stay as it is. As you have it listed.
Okay.
That, that's walking down update by screen, it stayed as what we projected here.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, where are you?
Um, I'm on page three. Um, that starts with ready retirement and going down to thirty-ten at the bottom of that page.
And I will let y'all know that, um, that fee has been the same since I've been here. He has not increased that at all.
And he's not asking?
No, I asked that question preparing the budget and he said to leave it the same.
Okay.
So.
And then the other one was. It was five. Over on page five, we're advertising. She wanted us to think about that.
Mm-hmm, yes, forty-two hundred.
What did we spend this year on the advertising? On, on audio and video programs?
We have not done any yet, cause of the two elections that we've had going on, but we'll have some time after this election, we'll be able to do that, some more videos.
But we have had some expenses.
Yes.
How much?
That was in the previous years.
Right.
Um, it was over three thousand, but I don't remember the exact number.
And that partially was, um, more?
Well, it was more and it was also with, um, Rockingham update, cause we did videos where, what was it? Three, four, five videos that was done then, and we would like to do some more on those.
At the end of each fiscal year, do you do a comparison of what we budgeted and what we spent? And you give us a copy of that?
Yes, and that's what you got when you come in. That's the expenditures, the really small print.
Small print.
I apologize. Yes, if you want me to put it on larger paper, but that's how it plants. That is where we are year to date. That is from July the first through yesterday. Now, a lot of the bills through the county, they're paid on Friday. So that does not include the bills that are being paid this Friday, such as the legal expense for, um, the challenge. Those, that number is not included in that because that check will be cut this week.
It looks like, uh, uh, the latest date is two sixteen.
Yes, but you'll also notice at the bottom, if any of the, well, say for Rockingham County, well, the Rockingham update, we do a PO for the full year. So you'll see that total amount is removed from the budget line item at the bottom. Even though it's not spent yet, it has been allocated for that item. Cause we do so many POs at the beginning of the year that we know for a fact that we're gonna spend, that we have agreements with.
Looking at page ten on this report, it looks like we have basically spent a little more than fifty percent of the budgeted mail.
And our big dollars are coming.
Yeah.
But yes.
You know, thinking in the future, uh, what we can probably do, you can develop as a result of all the changes that are taking place in, you can, that in the future, when you're working on a budget, you'll be able to have a percentage here from this, what you got this year and what will be the end of the, you know.
End of the year.
Total, total for this year, it'll give you a better, uh, you know, better number in which to look at.
Yeah, this year, well, see, I've had two municipal elections that I've gone through. I've gone through a mid-year election and we're going through the presidential election now, so I will have them all under my belt after this year.
Now, you'll have sufficient information.
Yes.
To stretch it out and, and make a lot easier budgeting. Then would you be a good man?
Yeah, but the, the not knowing is what scares you.
Yep.
Well, it scares me, but, um, but so far, so good. And I assume y'all do wanna meet next week? I think it was the twenty-seventh.
Budget meeting.
Yeah, February twenty-seventh. And that one.
It'll be the twenty-ninth if we do it the same day, Thursday.
It was the same day as our, um, absentee board meeting. We were gonna have it prior to that. I think it was.
Twenty.
Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven.
It's on my calendar. Three o'clock.
Twenty.
Twenty-seven at three o'clock.
And we just stay for, for the?
For the absentee.
Absentee meeting, yeah, that'll be at five, so. And what we can do at the end of this meeting, you can actually recess until February twenty-seventh at three o'clock. And that way you don't adjourn, cause you're continuing the same meeting.
And what would we do at that meeting?
You will. You'll have the final, I'll have the other maintenance agreement number and the other things that we talked about today, and if there's anything else that y'all would like to add individually, just let me know. And then, once that is done and y'all are good, if y'all wanna be on the budget, we were saying, um, and the next meeting will be February the twenty-seventh, next Tuesday at three o'clock. And following that, we'll have the absentee board meeting. Um, and if y'all are okay with what you see next Tuesday, we'll get it turned in and have it ready to go for them on, before March eighth, and I will show a total justification for y'all, just like what they're asking for. You will see the complete information at the next meeting.
So the final wrap-up meeting would be the twenty-seventh.
Unless y'all have, you know, feel like you need to have another one, we can do another one. But I tell them what we would do today is recess until the February twenty-seventh meeting at three o'clock. I mean, if you prefer to adjourn, you can, but you can also recess until a date specific and time.
Madam Chair, I, I would make motion that we recess until February the twenty-seventh at three o'clock for the final wrap-up on the budget, based on the input we've given the director today.
Second, that motion.
All right, it has been, the motion has been made to recess until the twenty-seventh for the final, um, budget to be reviewed by us. It has been second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We have recessed until the twenty-seventh at three o'clock.